Good evening, friends and neighbors, ladies and gentlemen. It is the 16th of September in the year of our Lord, 2019. It is 7 o'clock in the evening, and this is a meeting of the State and City Council. So, would all those of a like mind please join me for a flag salute? I'm gonna try to stand up here, but it's not easy. Don't leave up here. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic, which is standing on the nation under God, in the business of liberty, democracy, and justice. Did he still do that every day in the schools?
No.
No?
Only on Mondays.
Once in a while?
Every Monday.
Every Monday? I like that. Okay. Remember Monday. All right. Uh, let's see. Council's all here. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? Declaration of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, bias, general hatreds? Nothing? Introduction of interim police chief and interim deputy police chief. Mr. Campbell?
Actually, Mayor, that was an oversight on my part, and we did that at the last meeting.
I thought it was a nice idea. I knew we did it. We didn't do it, but it's, uh...
Sorry about that. Welcome back.
Okay. We'll call that one on you. All right. Public comments. Um, let's just take them in no special order.
Mr. Mayor?
Carrie, did you want to wait on yours? What?
Yes, I'll wait.
There's a presentation.
There's a presentation?
Yeah.
Oh!
We've got something special.
Well, we... I thought we could do that. I was gonna do that afterwards, but we can do it before. Okay. A presentation of Collectors Operator of the Year Award to Jason Miley by the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association. All right. All right. Okay. Please.
All right. Good evening. My name's Matt Edsel, and this is Craig Prosser. I'm the vice president of the West Central Oregon section of the Pacific Northwest Clean Waters Association. The West Central section covers seven counties in Oregon, including Marion, Lynn, Lane, Polk, Tillamook, Benton, and Lincoln County. We have over 300 wastewater operators in our section. We provide training opportunities for wastewater operators in our section. Many of these trainings are free to both the city and the operators. Oregon operators need two CEUs to recertify every two years. These free training opportunities benefit small communities like Staton in our section. One thing our section is known for is our plant profiles, where we provide a free lunch and invite operators to tour a wastewater treatment facility in our section. This gives operators a chance to compare notes and network with other operators. We are here tonight to present Jason Miley with our West Central Section Collections Operator of the Year Award. Craig's gonna talk a little bit about Jason.
Good evening. I'm Craig. I'm the president of the West Central section, and tonight we'd like to recognize the city of state and employee Jason Miley as our West Central Section PNCWA Collections Operator of the Year. Jason's a hard-working, dedicated family man to his wife, Mary, and their three daughters. Jason's an avid outdoorsman and a no-frills kind of guy who doesn't enjoy all this recognition. Jason went to work for the city of Staton in 2015, and it quickly became apparent that he had a very strong work ethic and skill set. I worked closely with Jason for three years and came to depend on Jason and his abilities. Jason was nominated by his current supervisor, Tom Edsel, for Collections Operator of the Year and selected by our Board of Directors to represent the West Central section. His nomination was then sent to the PNCWA region of Oregon, including Oregon, Washington, PNCWA region, Oregon, Washington, and Idaho, where he was selected and recognized just last Tuesday evening as the State of Oregon Collection Operator of the Year at our State Conference Awards banquet held in Portland. There are over 1,024 collection operators in the state of Oregon. So, congratulations, Jason, on a job well done and well deserved. So, we have a plaque here from the West Central section.
All right.
And then... This one's from the PNCWA region for State of Oregon Collection of the Year. Congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Can we get a few words from Mr. Miley, please?
Sure.
I'm just kidding.
Hand signals. Is there... Is there one standard bad joke among wastewater treatment operators?
There's a few of them, yes.
Everything runs downhill?
Pretty much.
Don't lick your fingers and wins lunch, right?
There are a few of them.
Okay. Now, Alyssa, can I... Can we go to public comments?
Please.
Good. Thank you. Paula Greaves. There we go. Paula? Polly. In parentheses. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. This is my first time here, so... And I've been in Staton 40 years, so...
Okay.
I also go by Polly Greaves. I just have one question, and it's about the situation with our police department. And I just wanted to know why they are going out away from... And not hiring within the department. Why are they looking... They said they were putting nationwide ad out there for a police chief. Why don't they promote within? Because the community is comfortable with our force. Why bring in a stranger? I was just wondering.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I suppose there's an answer to that. I don't have it. But there is... There is an answer, and a reasonable one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Do we need to get her address?
Her address? It is 1519 Fernridge Road in Staton. So, she's one of somebody's constituents. Okay. Mr. Markneck. Bill? Tell us a story, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff, and community. Just had a comment with Paula. I've known her son for a long time. He's worked with me, and... But I don't... We haven't seen each other for a long time, so I'm saying hello to her. So, I'm here tonight to speak about the Phillips Estates Storm Drainage System. So, just a little bit of background on myself. My wife and I, Jennifer, we started our life together about the same time Paula got here. So, that was in 1973, so... Yeah. So, pretty close. So, anyway, there were some questions about the Phillips Estates project that came up at some of the previous city council meetings, and so the... There were a posting made to the city community... Posting, I'm not sure exactly what you call that, board for community information, but anyway, it was posted there. So, anyway, and part of that was just, you know, a comment about the city's willingness to work with JCNW to address that issue, and that the city was waiting for us to come up with a proposal. So, we've started working on that proposal, and we've had one meeting with Lance at the Public Works Department, and so our engineer is working on that plan. So, anyway, just wanted to outline some of the items that we'll discuss there. A part of our plan, there's actually three items that we're hoping to put together to solve the drainage issues out in Phillips Estates area. The first item of that plan would be to construct a pump station similar to the one that operated for several years out in the Quail Run subdivision that pumped storm water from that subdivision out to Shaft Road up until about 2009. And at that point, the storm water began to be discharged onto the property that our family LLC owns north of Quail Run. So, anyway, that pump station would be really similar to the one that was there for several years. It would connect to the newly completed regional storm facility out on Kendall Way, which recently has begun... Been approved to accept storm water from the Lambert Estates subdivision, which is under construction at this time, and I think is supposed to be completed yet this fall. And that would provide the necessary outlet to Mill Creek, where the storm water is supposed to end up. So, the second item would be construction... Is that my...
Time's up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. It's nice to see that...
And I'm here at any time if there's questions.
Okay. It's nice to see that hopefully moving along. Really. Nona Simmons.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for this opportunity. I'm a little along the line with Polly, in the fact that I personally...
Tell them your name and your address, sir. Your name and your address.
I am Nona Simmons, and I live at 683 Water Street, or Maple Street, right here in Staton. I came into this part of the country in 1952, so I've watched Staton grow. I've watched it change. I've watched it deteriorate. There are so many things that the people are asking questions on. I mean absolutely no disrespect to you, young man, but we would like to know why we lost two of the very best police officers that we've ever had. And believe me, I've seen a lot of police officers in Staton over the years I've been I understand, sir, it was your doings that they are gone. And I, as a citizen, and someone who's lived in Staton a long time, would like an explanation. If not here, then later on. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Nona. Yeah. Okay. Ah, Mark Duchet.
Duchet.
Duchet? I know that.
Dusset. I've known him for decades. You can't pronounce my name. Okay. My name's Mark Dusset. I live at 726 North 5th Avenue here in Staton, and I have a letter I wrote to the editor that was supposed to go to the Staton Mail and the rest of the local newspapers, but I'm going to read the letter, and then I'm gonna give our new chief an opportunity. I'll give him a copy to talk to me before I send it off to the editors, just 'cause I respect... I don't know him, so I'll give him a chance. So, on September 5th, 2019, at 11:52 PM, I heard six loud gunshots that sounded like a large-caliber handgun and people talking close to my home. I called 911 at 11:44 PM. It was told on the phone after 2 minutes and 7 seconds, giving my information, I was told... Excuse me. That an officer would come by or call, and I left my porch light on, and my family stayed up till well after 3 AM waiting for contact. It is now after 7 on the 16th, and I still have not heard nothing at all from anybody in our police department. Six gunshots near my home is a threat to the life and mental health of my family and neighbors. My family waited for close to four hours for an officer to show up, take our statements, and ensure us that something was being done to protect us. Truth is, their inaction shows that the State and Police Department has little or no concern for the safety of some or all of the citizens. They have sworn to serve and protect. My granddaughter has been unable to sleep for several days now. Later, I learned that my neighbor's house was shot by a drive-by. That night, the police searched the area, including my yard, for shell casings, but did not talk to me. I've talked with most of my neighbors, and none have been contacted by Staton PD. Not one person... Not... I am not the only person in Staton to voice that we are losing our trust and respect for Staton Police's ability to do their job. I fear for the lives and safety of my family and the community. We need to know. We need them to protect us. Will they show... When we need them to protect us, will they show up? This incident makes me question that they will. Some of the houses in the area have security cameras that could help if they talk to us. I'd like to say that this was the first time this... Like this has happened to me, but not. In the 27 years my family has lived in our home, there have been three other incidents of State and Police Department not answering a 911 call from my home or showing up days later because the officers involved are no longer with Staton PD. I will not go into detail. I know that there is new leadership at State and Police Department, but we... But we still have the same problems. Before this leads to the loss of life or lives of state and citizens, the city council and State and PD need to make changes that will permanently fix this problem or disband the State and PD and turn the protection over to the state and citizen... Or... Protection of state and citizens to Marion County Sheriff or Oregon State Police. It's better to have a police officer show up a few minutes later than not at all. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay.
Clarissa Brothers.
There she is. Hi. Tell us who you are and where you live, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Clarissa Brothers at 402 North 3rd Avenue, right here in downtown Staton. I am here representing Revitalized Downtown Staton. I am the new events and marketing chair on the board, and I'm just thanking the city for their help. We used last year's money to help put on our concert series that was very successful. We had over 1,200 in attendance, so very proud of that, and we will hopefully continue to do that. We are going to need some more volunteers, so I'm also gonna present that here tonight for anyone that's interested in getting involved in our organization. Volunteers are greatly appreciated and needed. And a special thanks to Mick and Moms for helping us out. They were a huge help, both the employees, the owners, and the attendees at Mick and Moms. I'm also going to announce we are going to have our third annual ghost tour and chocolate walk coming up, and that's our partnership with The Brown House. So, we're very excited about that, and that's coming up October 26th, from 5 to 9. So, we're also gonna need some volunteers for that. So, if anyone knows of anyone that'd be interested in the high school age, anyone needing volunteer hours, that would like to be involved, like from drama or choir, we gratefully appreciate it. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. All right. Carrie, did you want to wait until the... That topic, mobile...
Yeah. I'll wait for that topic.
Mobile... Okay. Well, you know, you could...
Is that like 10:36?
Yeah, probably 10:30 to 11:00. We're gonna run it as late as we can to try to discourage...
You're just saying, you just let me know when you need to talk to me.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Nothing else on requests for recognition, so I guess I got everyone.
Wait, who's another one?
I didn't. Well, are there any more floating around out there?
Later on?
Oh, later on?
You're bet.
Is that for... Carrie, is that for food cards?
You said for later on.
For later on?
Yeah, for the 10:36.
Yeah.
No.
Okay. For later on. All right. We've had a little... A little bit of... Almost a pattern of these things wandering in through the evening. I guess I should announce you have 30 seconds to get a green slip in. 25 seconds. 10 seconds. Done. Okay. Ken Carey. General business. Ken? Where are you?
I'll wait until the 10:36. I know what that is.
Ken? Okay. That's fine.
I'm sorry. I called it the wrong thing.
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Nothing? Going once? Nothing. Okay. Consent agenda for this evening, August 19th, city council minutes. What would you... Folks like to do with those? Anyone's had a chance to look at those? Perused them?
I make a motion. We accept the consent agenda as presented. Presented. Thank you.
Seconded.
All right. The consent... A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, which includes not only city council minutes, but liquor license, limited on-premises application for cinema treasures, and a resolution number 995, safe routes to school construction grant application. So, we're all good with that? All right. Motion and a second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? All right. There are no public hearings tonight, thank goodness. General business, second consideration of ordinance number 1036, implementing the recommendations of the ordinance 1019 Review Committee. Mr. Fleishman.
Our planning director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The issue before you this evening is the second consideration of ordinance 1036. This issue was before you at your last meeting in August, and the council approved the first consideration of the ordinance with a modification, which therefore required that it come back before the council. At that time, the change in the code regarding smoking on sidewalks was removed from the ordinance, and the ordinance now just addresses issues of weeds and trash, maintenance of awnings, and illumination of buildings in the downtown area. The amendments have been made as requested by the council, which was removing that section on smoking, and you've got the revised ordinance in front of you for your second consideration.
Okay. And are there public comments on this? There's a space for it. Mr. Carey, did you want to say something about...
You know, Mayor, it's my mistake. I wanted to talk about the right way to go. Always.
Right away. Okay. All right. And... Jerry, any business and streets, mobile... Okay. No more of those. All right. Are there any other public comments on that? On that ordinance?
Do you have to sign up for that?
No. I don't think so. It just says public comments, so I guess...
Kerry Sessons, 1501 East 49th. I just was curious, are they gonna form another subcommittee or committee to address the issue of smoking? Is that something that was kind of like we were brainstorming about that, and then... I mean, that's not dead?
That's...
Okay. That's...
The direction from the council at the last meeting was to pull the previous committee back.
Okay.
And due to my previously scheduled vacation, that has not yet happened.
Dan, you deserve it.
I doubt that.
So... Just let me know when that is. I just was wanting to make sure that that part of it wasn't dead and that we were gonna reconvene and try to find a sensible way for everyone to be cheery.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So... So, are there... Are there any other public comments on that one? Okay. Discussion by the council, please.
I still like it just as much as we did last time. Amazing work by the subcommittee or the advisory group, whatever we're calling it, but it was great, and so I really appreciate everyone who volunteered for that, and I hope that they will help us out again and dig into the weeds of this policy.
Unintended?
Oh, yeah. Not intended.
So, do I understand this, that if we approve this thing tonight, but you want to leave the smoking issue on the table? Is that...
That's what we did last time.
That's what we did last time?
Yeah. So, we're approving it as... Or we could be approving it as presented, but then we would be having the subcommittee come back together and try to work on the smoking issue, and then we could talk about this again.
So, I'm sort of right. An open-ended approval. Sort of?
It's not open-ended. It's as presented, or any modifications someone wants to do that we agree on.
Okay. Yeah. All right. 30 days. Okay. So, what do you folks want to do with this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
A motion that we approve the second consideration of ordinance 1036 as revised.
I second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the second consideration of ordinance number 1036 as revised. Any more discussion? Comments, questions? Okay. Alyssa? Would you poll the group, please?
Sure. Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Mullin?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Motion passes forward to Sarah.
Okay. All right. That was... Okay. Community improvement grants. Mr. Campbell and Mr. Fleishman. Gentlemen, in any order.
I've gotten the nod from the manager, so that'll be me.
Jump in there.
So, the issue before you is staff is looking for feedback from the council on the development of the community improvement grant application process and the program itself. For the past number of years, the council has awarded grants to nonprofit organizations, and last year, for the very first time, the city started what was called a neighborhood improvement grant process. This year, the budget combines those two into one pot of money, and so staff has worked on trying to set up kind of an outline of how that... How those monies will be dispersed, what are the eligible activities, who are the eligible recipients. To summarize what we've put before you, the proposal is that an application must be received from either a tax-exempt nonprofit organization or from a group of at least three individuals who have come together to promote a project in their neighborhood. If it is from a neighborhood group, then an individual must be designated as the lead applicant for contact with the city. There'll be two different categories of grants. One for the support of programs and services that directly benefit state residents. The other would be for neighborhood improvement projects. Those would be projects that provide physical improvement...
So, what do you folks want to do with this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
A motion that we approve the second consideration of ordinance 1036 as revised.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the second consideration of ordinance number 1036 as revised. Any more discussion? Comments, questions? Okay, Alyssa? Would you poll the group, please?
Sure. Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Motion passes forward to Sarah.
Okay, all right, that was, okay. Community improvement grants. Mr. Campbell and Mr. Fleishman? Gentlemen, in any order.
I've gotten the nod from the manager, so that'll be me.
Jump in there.
So, the issue before you is, staff is looking for feedback from the council on the development of the community improvement grant application process and the program itself. For the past number of years, the council has awarded grants to nonprofit organizations, and last year, for the very first time, the city started a, what was called a neighborhood improvement grant process. This year, the budget combines those two into one pot of money, and so, staff has worked on trying to set up kind of an outline of how that, how those monies will be dispersed, what are the eligible activities, who are the eligible recipients. To summarize what we've put before you, the proposal is that an application must be received from either a tax-exempt nonprofit organization, or from a group of at least three individuals who have come together to promote a project in their neighborhood. If it is from a neighborhood group, then an individual must be designated as the lead applicant for contact with the city. There'll be two different categories of grants, one for the support of programs and services that directly benefit state residents, the other would be for neighborhood improvement projects. Those would be projects that provide physical improvement to either a public space. As an example, one of the projects funded last year under the neighborhood improvement grant was improvements to the West Town Park. So, the, the residents of West Town came and said, here's improvements we'd like to see to the park, and city staff carried those improvements out. The other example of, that was funded last year, was a neighborhood group, it was property owned by the homeowners association, but kind of neglected for years, and using city funds, they did weed control, blackberry removal, set out some lighting and some benches. They did the work, submitted the bills, and were reimbursed with city funds. So, those were two examples of those, that type of neighborhood improvement. You've got in your packet a draft text for what would become a brochure about the program that lays out the application review criteria, how to apply examples, and the, and the program objectives. And again, we're, staff's just looking for your feedback, comments, suggestions, improvements, before we send this out, you know, turn it into a brochure, and, and get it out to the public, and, and get the grant application process started.
Mr. Campbell, did you have a comment or three, please?
A couple of things I'll add. This was a council goal, so this is part of the objectives of the, of the city council. I think we're also basing this off a model known as Strong Towns, which is to make small incremental investments over a broad period of time, over a broad range of the community. So, it's the idea of, of looking to make small investments that can improve your community over time. So, that's what this model is based off of. We had some success last year with a couple of good programs, so this, this goal is to expand that, to, to meet your goals, and to give more opportunities for these two groups to continue to make improvements to the community. So, I'd be happy in answering the questions as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we got, we got public comments in there? Yeah. Are there any public comments on, on this one?
I just have a question. When and where can we get the applications?
Please.
When and where? You said it was for nonprofits. When and where can we get the applications, and when are they do, when do they have to be turned back in?
Uh, we'll see. What does it say? It tells us.
So, so, the draft that is currently before the council, and that's all it is, suggests that the application period will run from October 1st...
There it is.
...to November 29th. They will be available either at city hall in a paper format, or on the city's website to download.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's a good one. Public comments? I guess I'm the public, aren't I?
Yeah.
One thing I liked on your draft, um, review criteria, at second page, if, one, two, second paragraph, neighborhood improvement projects. I would take all this money if it was within my limited power to do so, and put it in sidewalks on, on Ida Street. It wouldn't be enough, and it probably should be a, some kind of major city budget item at some point, but that's what I'd do with it. That's just one. Somebody else? Go ahead, jump in here, folks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think that this is such an improvement from the previous years for the format. I remember watching council meetings for the last two years, and wondering, how do they choose this? Like, it never really made sense to me, and, and so, to see this great structure where it tells you exactly, you know, how, how they're gonna be awarded, what kind of things are gonna be considered, it just makes it very clear, and, and so you know that everyone has a fair shot, and that we're not just gonna give them to anybody just because they applied for it, you know? It's gonna go to really good projects like what happened last year, which is great, but I love seeing this new format. It will help us make really great decisions with your guys' tax dollars.
And, there's still room under supportive programs and services for state and residents on the backside of that form again. The funds may be used to support services or programs that provide a direct benefit to residents of the city of Staton. These may include social services, youth programs, like Boy Scouts, or Girl Scouts, Scouts, or senior programs. Grants will not be awarded for general operational expenses. So, there's, there's hope for some of those traditional things, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Counselor?
Dan, so, where it says the applications will be reviewed based on the following criteria, I just wonder about, since we're lumping together the two, the neighborhood improvements, and then the, what are we calling this? Sorry. Since we're lumping the two programs together, if you're, if you're trying to decide who's going to get the money, and we have one program that's gonna be, that has, it's a nonprofit, and they're gonna be reaching more people, they're gonna have the ability to have more matching, how does that, it's, how do, how do we, how do we come to a conclusion that, to pick that over something that, like a neighborhood, there's three or four people that get together, but they, they have a vested interest in getting, you know, improving their area, so how, I'm just a little concerned that putting the, the two together, that how are we gonna compare them?
I think that comparison will, will come from what is the impact of the project, not from who is it that's proposing it. So, while it may be just three or four neighbors who come together with an idea, if the idea is to fix the sidewalks in the neighborhood, or to make improvements in the neighborhood park, then we can look at, well, who, how many people are served by that park, or live in that neighborhood? So, even though it may only be four people coming forward saying, here's our idea, it could be a couple of hundred families that are benefiting from it. And I think similarly, we could look at what a nonprofit will be proposing, for how many participants would be in their program.
Mr. Mayor, follow up?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, will, Dan, will they have to be the ones to, to give us that information on about approximately how many people they think that this, this project is going to, is that gonna be part of their presentation to us?
Certainly, the applicant providing that information will help them score better.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that, that staff can't also do some of that analysis, depending on the types of applications that will be presented to council to make the decision on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Someone else? Yes?
I have a question for you, Dan. You guys are gonna be using some type of a matrix scoring system for this, so that's very objective, and that's part of the grant application that's gonna be available, is it's gonna get the information that you guys need to make an objective decision versus just, oh, that sounds like a, a great project, let's give it to them?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions or thoughts? Do you folks generally like the, this process? It's a little bit top-heavy.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, this looks great to me, I mean, especially with the dispassionate view of just looking at some sort of matrix, as Counselor Hook proposed. That way, kind of remove the human element out of it as best we can, and just look at how many citizens we're able to impact positively on this. That's my take on it.
Okay, it's good.
Mr. Mayor, that's kind of what I was getting at, so, thank you.
Okay, so, we're, my, great minds. The decision, a decision tonight would simply be what to accept this, this proposal, this way of determining?
I, I don't think a decision is necessary. We were looking for feedback, suggestions for improvements, complaints, take it to another direction, whatever the reaction of the council was, and we can, we can take, we'll take that feedback and make whatever changes are appropriate, and then get this into a, a more finished form and out to the public.
Mr. Mayor?
What have you heard so far?
I, I've heard that generally, those who have spoken have said they generally like it, and I heard more questions than suggestions for changes.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, yes.
I would really, Dan, I would really like to see the scoring matrix also posted to the website, so people know what it's going to be scored on, so that there isn't any question as to what type of information they need to put in there, so that no one's missing, you know, missing that, not understanding that a certain thing is worth more points, or whatever the matrix is at the end of, of where, how you create it. Just making sure that it's very transparent for everyone, so that everyone has an equal opportunity to, to get the, the grant.
We, we did that last year in the neighborhood improvement grant.
With the matrix on the website?
It wasn't a matrix, but it was, here are the evaluation criteria.
Yeah. It'd be good to see the scoring sheet also, for them.
So, we can do that, as part of the, as part of the packet that gets downloaded.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The packet looks great. I think the brochure is top-notch. Again, agree with the matrix. I'm a big fan of competition, and it's come to light recently, to my attention, that not everybody is on the internet. And so, yeah, there are people who won't have access to the website, so if there are other avenues that we can look to, to get the word out, that would be most appreciated, whatever that might be.
Mr. Mayor, maybe the newsletter that goes out with our water bills would be good? Just a thought.
There's time? Let's see. The next one, uh, the next one's, what, October, November, November, December?
November, December.
November, December. Okay, so, the one for this, September, October is out there, okay. There's gonna be some hurt feelings on, some of this, some people will get left out. Are we...
Mr. Mayor?
Okay with that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We can, we could definitely do an insert, to do a special one for the next, the next utility bill, so that's, it's easy enough to do, and easy enough to insert, so that's a pretty simple solution, I think.
All right, for super. Okay, thank you.
That'd be great.
Go ahead.
Nope, that would be great. That's good. Can we also do, can like, can any, are there any community boards that we could post, like, post it at city hall, and, are there like, yeah, the library, maybe some of the, a couple of the grocery stores, if they have a public board, I think Ross has a public board.
Safeway does?
Safeway, yeah. Can we have that done as well, so that more people can?
City money, chicken for sale? Yeah, okay. Yeah, anything else? Dan, have you got enough feedback to give you some clues?
I have, thank you.
Good job.
All right.
Thank you.
Superb work. Um, shall, shall we, shall we quit for a while and reconvene about 10 for this discussion regarding establishing a permit process for conducting business in the street right of way? Anyone else crazy about that? I'm not even. Okay, that's our next thing. It's a discussion, and it says, there's, this is another one that says there's a council decision on the end of it, we'll see what happens. Mr. Fleishman? Discussion regarding establishing a permit process for conducting business in the street right of way. Go ahead, please.
So, as council may recall, back at the, I believe at the beginning of July, you held a public hearing on a, an amendment that staff had, an ordinance that staff had proposed that would have amended the food truck regulations. Following that public hearing, staff had a conversation with the city attorney about a number of issues associated with what was being discussed. And his suggestion was, rather than going the route that staff had proposed to council back in the spring, that would have, was just changing the regulations about where food trucks could be located, that we go a different direction, which would be to allow businesses to come in and get a permit, to have some of their operation be in the public I latched onto that idea quite quickly, because I saw that it addressed two different issues. The first issue is, at your public hearing, you heard from quite a few merchants and restaurant owners who said, I don't want a food truck in front of my business. And, this approach that is now, that we have put before you this evening, addresses that by having the business owner who's in the, shall we call it, brick and mortar operation, be the one to come in and apply and receive the permit. So, they don't, if they don't come in and get a permit, they won't have a food truck in front of their store or restaurant. The second issue that it addresses is that currently, there are businesses, particularly in the downtown area, who are doing business on the sidewalk. They have cafe tables and chairs, they display merchandise, and the city has kind of allowed that with a informal wink and nod, saying, gee, it's okay, but don't sneak out into the sidewalk too much, to make sure that the sidewalk can still be used. And, the, again, the proposal, that is, before you, would establish standards and a permit process for the, it'll really be mostly downtown businesses to use some of the public sidewalk for their business activity. So, we have not put this in the form of an ordinance. Again, we're here not looking for a decision from the council tonight, other than for direction on whether you think this is a reasonable approach, and if so, then we will return with this in, in an ordinance format for your consideration. So, I have, I have not gone through a lot of, in my verbal report here, I have not gone through a lot of detail of what's in here, but just sort of lay out how, how we got here. The, the standards that are in here essentially require, again, it is the business that comes in and gets a permit, so therefore, they don't need to worry about somebody else setting up shop in front of their business. It does require that the activity must be placed directly in front of their business, so if I'm the one coming in, I can't have my operation spill out in front of my next-door neighbor's business. It may not be in front of the building entrance, has to allow free movement of people in and out. It must leave at least a five-foot wide, unobstructed sidewalk, with a two-foot buffer from the Merchandise may be displayed only within 30 inches of the exterior wall of the building. No vending machines are permitted. And then there are similar standards for sidewalk cafes, and the standards that we had originally proposed for food truck operation would also apply to food trucks, as far as where they may be located in relationship to intersections, parking spaces, fire hydrants, et cetera. So, again, we're, we're looking... So, again, we're, we're looking for your feedback and direction, whether you want to continue to go down this route that we're now proposing, and if so, we'll be, and whether you think this is something you want to schedule a noticed public hearing on, or whether you want us to just come back with an ordinance, or not at all. We'll, we'll, on this subject, we'll be back for some other meeting anyway, but...
Let me ask for some public comment at this time. Thank you, Dan. Ken, did you want to jump in on this one?
Ken Carey, 1941 Kent Avenue, State in Oregon, 97383. As most, most of you know, I own the Spud Bus. My wife and I own the Spud Bus, baked and loaded potatoes. I appreciate the council, mayor, everybody listening to us over the last, almost year on this, as we've dragged, have dragged this out. I want to just say a couple things. The right-of-way, there were a lot of gray areas in the last graph that we saw up on the screen last month. Basically, what we want to do is be able to park in designated areas such as, like, Snow Peak, down on First and Water. They do have a driveway we can pull up to, that still leaves us enough room on the sidewalk, where we can monitor the traffic of pedestrians. And I can say, as a food truck owner, we don't have more than maybe four or five people at the bus window at a time, you know, coming out, making their order, and taking them back in with them, or we'll go in and take the orders to the people. It's a, to me, it's, I can understand the safety part of it, but for the most part, there's maybe 10 cars parked on Water Street in front of Snow Peak, the rest of the cars park on Second and Third, and walk across the street into Snow Peak. So, for them to stand out and order from the bus, it's not a real big concern for me personally, for the safety. Like I said, we have three or four people that maybe show up at one time to order a potato. Currently, we're parking at the Napa Parking Lot, which I think is not safe, because people are having to run across the street, back and forth, from Snow Peak to the bus, rather than just coming out the main entrance of Snow Peak and ordering right there at the window on the sidewalk. And I, if I understand correctly, Dan, you're saying not to make a decision tonight? Is that your proposal?
There, there, this has not been prepared in ordinance format, yet.
Okay, 'cause I'm looking at the glass, it says council decision at the very end of that, so I was just wondering about that. So, I think the sooner the better, we'll feel about it as, as vendors. But at the same time, I appreciate the city's support. We've been almost three years now with the Spud Bus, and a lot of you have come to the window, we've seen you guys, we've met you personally, and we appreciate the business that you've given us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Carey, did you want to speak on this one?
Carey?
Yes.
Jerry? Did you say Jerry?
No, Carey.
Jerry?
You!
Carey Sessom, 1501 East Burnett, Pioneer Meadows, Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third, in historic downtown Stateon. I, I do support the possibility of this ordinance. I do feel that it might make all of us happy versus only some of us. I keep going back to the meeting where you had the hired economic vitality expert here, and the top three things that she suggested to you, to revitalize in downtown Stateon, keep it up and coming. The number-one thing she said was to take care of existing business. At the initial hearing when we were here, we had Yugo's, Love &amp; Oven, North Saniam Funeral, myself, and Harold's Jeweler, and those five businesses represent over 115 years on Third Street. And so, I, I just feel that you need to recognize that we are the ones that have been there, and we do support vendors in our area. I don't want it to seem that we don't. However, I feel like it needs to be a very detailed process, so that they can't just park wherever they want, for lack of better words. So, I, I would be interested in maybe collecting a few of the food truck vendors, and maybe a few of the business owners on Third, to come together and maybe, after Dan creates the ordinance, give us the opportunity to go through the ordinance together. Great things happen when people work together, and then all of our needs could be met, maybe not our wants, but at least all of our needs, because there, there's enough for all of us, and if we just could work together on that, I think that it would be much more productive. I picked Ken. And the spinner guy. Those would be my two top picks for representation of those businesses, 'cause Snow Peak is really, I think, the big dog in all of this, is they're creating a really great business in the downtown core, and, and we welcome that, for sure. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Jerry?
Abud.
Please.
Thank you for giving me the time to speak. My name's Jerry Abud, 836 East Cathy Street in Stateon. Mr. Mayor and council, I just have a few things to say. I want to say, to start with, saying I own two buildings on Second Avenue. One was built in 1996, and one was, we had built in 2000. I bought a building in 2018, next to City Hall, that we're currently rehabbing, and hopefully someday we'll have it finished, which may be in November. And I bring this up to say that, to show that my wife and I have a real commitment to the downtown. We have a monetary commitment, we have a belief in the downtown, and we want to make sure it's, it's good for all of us. Allowing food trucks on private property is a good idea, and the current code is appropriate. Allowing food trucks on the public streets is not a good idea, for some of the following reasons. The city should not be renting out the streets here for all of us to use all of the time. Even if a business wants to park a food truck in front of their property, it's not, it shouldn't be the business that decides this, you know, it's, we as the public should decide it. And you, as council members, obviously, are the decision-makers. We should not be passing an ordinance just to please one or two people. You can go back to Ricky Nelson and his garden party, and his little song about, you know, you can't please everybody. And you aren't going to be able to please everybody, and if you attempt to do that, you're going to end, end up with an ordinance that's just untenable. Allowing generators is at least annoying, if not detrimental, to the apartment dwellers and other businesses. I mean, I've been to those, the music events, which have been really great downtown, but if you put those generators in between a bunch of buildings, you're just going to have noise bouncing off all the buildings. Many trucks are oversized and beyond the scope, or beyond the scale of the area. I mean, some of these vehicles are reasonably sized, but some of them are bigger than a UPS truck, and they're going to be high, they're going to block off the visibility of other businesses. And the other thing I want to say about parking spaces, they do not follow, necessarily follow the business, to say that you're going to put a, let them park in front of your place, but not in front of your door. I mean, these businesses are 20, 25-foot, 30-foot wide, and you're talking about putting a 20-foot parking space. They are not going to line up, for the most part. So, what are you going to do? You're going to say, yeah, you can put yours on that 20-foot space, but half of it's in your neighbor's space. I don't think property, I think property owners should have a say, and not just, I'm sorry, am I done?
Yep.
Well...
The timer went off.
If my time's up, my time's up, just tell me.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Give the property owners some say-ohs.
Thank you.
I didn't think I was working on this three-minute thing, but that's all right, if, if that's what, that's what we want to do.
Makes it fair.
Thank you, Jerry, and Carey, and Ken. Where are we? Let's see, public comment, council deliberation. What do you folks want to do with this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Oh, hold on, where am I? Dan, of the cities that, you mentioned some cities in here that do have the right-of-way ordinance, the right-of-way ordinances, do you know of any problems that they have? Specifically, Mr. Abud was talking about the parking spaces. I was thinking about that as I was parking on Third Avenue today, because we have new parking spaces. And so, is that going to be an issue with people parking in front of the business, not in front of the door, situation?
Yeah, the park, the parking spaces don't line up with building walls. So, it, it could be that those are creating some issues. As currently drafted, the, the regulations require that the activity be only in front of the building, or the property, or the premises that the business who's getting the permit occupies. So, you can't spill out over your, your neighbors, in front of your neighboring business. That could be potentially an issue, but it, what it will mean is if it's a relatively small frontage on the business, then it can't be a big vehicle that pulls in there. They, the, the permit application process that's outlined in the draft you have in front of you, requires a sketch showing, here's where we're going to be. So, the business who's coming in to get the permit, whether it's for a sidewalk cafe, or whether it's for food trucks, or whether it's for displaying merchandise out on the sidewalk, will need to think about that, and, and be aware that here's the limitations. If I have a 24-foot-wide storefront, that means I only have 24 feet to work in.
And, um, do you know, if you had talked to any of the other business, or the other towns that allowed it?
I did not. I merely, I merely looked at their codes and sort of cherry-picked provisions from a couple of towns. Mostly, I believe it was Beaverton's code.
Okay.
That the bulk of this is based on, with a couple of, of things from some other communities thrown in.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Ken?
We're in council deliberation?
No.
I'll allow it, real quick.
Just to, just to add on to that question, real quick. We do go to Portland, we park on 78th, off of Stark Street, which is a very busy area by Mr. Plywood, and a one-way street, that's two lanes. We park right in front of Montevilla Brew Works, on the side, right at their bay door, right on the street. No issues at all in Portland, Monmouth County.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
We might as well have a little chaos here. Oh, yes, just a second. Can I follow up with a question specifically about food carts? And then your question, ma'am. Dan, Ken comes in to get a permit, this hypothetical, comes in to get a permit for the Spud Bus, how long's it good for?
The, the food truck permit is good for a year.
Oh, okay.
It's an annual license.
The right-of-way.
And, and as drafted, this is also, this license for conducting business in the street right-of-way is also an annual license.
Okay.
This is different.
My concern...
But this, but this is different.
Okay.
Ken, Ken gets a license to operate within the city of Stateon.
Okay.
If Snow Peak Brewing, for instance, wants to have Ken park out front, Snow Peak Brewing comes in and gets a license for a food truck, and it could be Ken on Mondays, and Taco Guy on Tuesdays, and Fried Fish on Fridays.
Okay, you probably see where I'm going with this. What, what kind of a burden does this put on, on city staff to, for these permits? Have we thought of that, or wondered through it?
There'll be a permitting process of evaluating the permit application to see if it meets the standards.
Okay.
And then there will be various enforcement, once it's operating, which I would imagine would be mostly either the result of an issue that's going on, on the street, or complaints that are received.
I may not have worded that carefully enough. Is city staff going to be spending a lot of time with these permits? What, what do we envision here?
I, I don't envision that, that the review of an application and the decision to issue a permit would be much time, you know, I don't know how to begin to put a, a number of minutes to it, but it should be pretty clear that either they meet the standards or they don't. They'll need to provide a sketch that shows, here's where my tables and chairs are going to be on the, on the sidewalk, or here's where I'm going to be displaying my merchandise, or here's where the food truck's going to park. How, then it's a matter of assessing, are they going to meet the standards of at least five feet of sidewalk that's still open? Are they away from street trees that could impinge on that? And do they have the required insurance certificate? And have they otherwise filled out the application process properly?
This is all on the city manager?
Or, or the manager's designee, whoever that will be.
So, he can't use, filling out, or looking at permit applications to never get on the phone to me, right?
Oh, he's got 100 excuses for not doing that.
Mr. Mayor?
You're right. Back to you, ma'am. Thank you for indulging me. Dan?
Uh, I think this is a, an interesting concept. I'd love to see you reach out to some of the cities, maybe? It would be nice to, to know if Beaverton, Gretchen, Mount Angel, Eugene, Bend, Hillsborough, if any of them have had people come in and just hate this, this policy, and, and why? And what would they do differently if they were to look at it? Or maybe they are going to look at it and, and tweak some things now that it's been implemented. I know you said you got the policy off their website, but sometimes, like, talking to people also helps. I'm curious if we talked to the police department about any of the, their safety concerns on this?
We have.
And that they don't have any concerns?
I didn't say that.
All right.
The, um, the police department was going through, at, at the time this was being drafted, we were going through the changes in the police department, so they were not involved in the drafting of it, but they will be involved in the next draft.
Wonderful. And then, have we talked to any of the businesses that would be involved? I really liked Carey Sessom's idea of, of having some people come together after this next draft, and, and kind of tweaking, giving their comments on some of the stuff that they think could be a potential issue for the downtown businesses, and the mobile food units, because everyone should be able to, to work together. And it sounds like, from who's here, we have people that want to work together, and they have ideas on how to do that.
So, um, I personally visited the five businesses that would be impacted by enactment of this regulation.
Only five businesses are?
The, the four that are currently doing business in the public right-of-way. There are three businesses that have cafe tables and chairs on... There are three businesses that have cafe tables and chairs on the public sidewalk. There is one business that has, for the past number of years, been displaying merchandise on the public sidewalk. And there is one business that would... There are two businesses that would like to have food trucks out front of their business. That adds up to six because one business falls in two of those categories. So, not last week, but the week before, I went and provided a copy of this draft to them to let them know that this discussion was going to be taking place tonight. Because they're the ones that would have... That are doing things that would require that they now come in and get a license for.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that seems almost limiting to the other businesses that maybe would want to attract... Maybe they don't serve food right now or they don't want to put anything out on the sidewalk right now. You don't... Maybe you don't know that they want to do those things or they... Maybe they want to have a food truck come out in front of their business that is... Has nothing to do with food or beer or anything. But they also want that opportunity to attract business by having a mobile food unit out front. I just think we could get more voices heard and we should have the right people making this. And I don't know. It's great that you talk to some people. I think it'd be great to hear more because this is a pretty hot topic for the downtown businesses. We want to do it right. I know I sent you and Keith a ton of articles that I found on mobile food unit issues that people have had and some things that have gone really bad for cities that have made bad policy on it, Supreme Court decisions. So I just want to make sure we get it right.
Good. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
Thank you. Dan, I didn't really see much addressed in here if, say, I'm a business owner and the business owner next to me would both like to go ahead and have a food truck in front of our businesses and they may obstruct both of our businesses. So is there an option for some sort of collaboration between the two business owners to allow a food truck in front of both of them? I guess that's kind of a hypothetical.
Yeah, I guess if two neighboring businesses both have a permit, then...
So what I'm getting at is, does that need to be specifically outlined in the ordinance for that to take place?
I don't think so.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
Dan, under the miscellaneous portion, it might understand that if people have benches outside of their business, that they also need a permit for that?
If there is a bench out front of business, but the business is not conducting business at the bench, then no, they would not need a permit. So there is a bench available for public seating out front my office, but we don't do business out on the sidewalk. So therefore, no permit would be needed.
Okay. Gotcha. Mr. Mayor?
Others, go ahead. Counselor?
A question was brought up again about generators. I didn't see anything in here. I did see something about noise issues, but nothing about generators specifically. Were you thinking that that would cover that?
I wasn't thinking about generators in drafting this. I think it's probably worth mentioning.
Yeah.
Other things that, since drafting, that have come up that are perhaps worth considering would be limitations on the hours of operation or days of the week or the size of vehicles as far as food trucks are concerned. But I think that that will... Some of that will be addressed by some of these other things and perhaps making some of these other standards a bit more objective and less subjective.
Thank you.
Other thoughts?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Question three.
Okay. So we had talked about the different... You said that you had spoken with downtown businesses. But the way that it's drafted, are there other areas of town that could have their... Could potentially have their sidewalk cafes or merchandise out and/or food truck in the right-of-way besides the downtown area?
Because of the requirement that there be at least five feet of unobstructed sidewalk...
Oh, yes, okay.
I believe that there won't be any business outside of the downtown area that could do business on the sidewalk and still leave five feet unobstructed. We just don't... There's no other place with sidewalks that are more than seven feet wide. So I think the reality is that that requirement means we're really only talking about downtown businesses, though we don't say that in the proposed regulations.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Go ahead.
Keith, this question is for you. Should we be maybe talking to the city attorney about whether we can restrict times that people can operate or?
We can talk to the city attorney. My answer is going to be the city generally has the right to do time and or place restrictions on any... Anything. It's pretty well a universal standard. So all of that would be things that I would feel like, without having a city attorney sitting here, he would say, or he or she would say, yes, the city has a right to do time and or place restrictions as long as they're equitable and as long as not intended in some way to discriminate.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions and thoughts? Under deliberation. You folks want to go to a decision? You ready to? Think about this a little more? We've got some options. See staff to proceed with preparation of an ordinance and schedule a public hearing where we can chew on this some more. Second one is direct staff to proceed with preparation of an ordinance. Third one, direct staff to modify the proposed regulations prior to returning with a draft ordinance. And number four is retain the code unchanged. So where we do folks like to be? If you want to do something with this tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to... Because I think public hearings are great for more input, I would like to move to option number one and move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for presentation to the city council reflecting the discussion this evening and schedule a public hearing for October 7.
If...
Can I find a second here somewhere?
Do we need to do that?
All right. Motion and a second to go with option one, which is direct staff to proceed with preparation of an ordinance and scheduling a public hearing for October 7.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes?
So if we wanted to create a committee with the brick-and-mortar businesses and the food trucks, would that be something we need to add to this? Or we could talk about that later?
It might come out of the October 7.
Okay.
I think that was part of, including the discussion that we've had this evening also. That was part of it.
Yeah, okay.
That's my intention.
Reflecting the discussion this evening and scheduling... Okay. I just didn't read all of that.
We didn't say that, though.
Okay. All right. So any other discussion or thoughts here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I would like to see some more community members involved. I feel like perhaps I wasn't clear, but that was definitely something that I said that I liked that Carrie Sessom's brought up. I would like to see that happen if we can between now and October 7, just to get some more feedback on what you prepare.
If the council wants to try to get a committee together prior to actually creating the ordinance, I would suggest that you not hold the public hearing until, I guess it would be October 21 instead of the 7th because the 7th is only three weeks away. And to pull together people, have a meeting, have stuff, or whatever the next available date is.
Well, I guess I would say if we're going to put a committee together, you'd want to go later than that. Just have the time.
Right.
I mean, you're talking five weeks then instead of three. So, you know, it'd be November or December to bring it back before the end of the year.
That seems like a really long time to do that.
Can you say something? You probably will, yes. Carrie? Get a pair. No, that's fine. I'm perfectly okay with that.
I think that... Can I just?
We have a motion on the floor, though. We need to, like, kill the motion. So I'd like to...
I love having everyone get a chance to say what they need to say, but I guess...
Mr. Mayor, can I rescind my motion?
Yeah, you can.
So we can...
If you would, please.
Yeah.
Would you rescind your second?
I will.
All right. So it's an open, free-for-all again. Carrie?
Can I just make a suggestion from my side? I'm not sure how the vendors feel, but there's a little sense of urgency for them.
Right.
So I know I'm not on council, but just let me suggest this, that Dan, go ahead and write the ordinance and then it goes to public hearing. And then we'll all come to public hearing. And if there's some weird issue with the ordinance at public hearing, then we could come together to refine the ordinance. I feel like that might move a little faster. Things might kind of go along a little faster so they're not in this little bit of limbo area, per se. I trust that Dan will create something around this suggestion that he has. I think it's a really great idea. Kind of takes away all the gray and everybody's needs can be met that way. We'll hear the ordinance. And then if there's some, like, fine-tooth comb that needs to go through it, then I think we could decide that at the public hearing on the 7th. Are you guys...
I like that.
Yeah? Kind of.
Mr. Mayor?
Is that possible? Keith, you had a concern about the timeframe.
No. I mean, I think she talked about a public hearing and that's the point where they could all talk about it, so.
Okay.
It's up to the council. What do you want to do?
Passion rehab.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Yes. So one of my concerns with... I understand the sense of urgency, but one of my concerns with rushing something like that where Counsel Hook brought up a good point where there's... There could be issues in Supreme Court decisions where I wouldn't... I would not want to rush something like this and then have it be something like 10-19 that was brought back to us because it wasn't... Because there wasn't enough involvement from the community. And then have that happen over again. I'd rather take just a little bit more time to make sure that it's right the first time.
Mr. Mayor?
How about a town hall with mandatory attendance? All 8,000 of us. Where would we sit? I don't know. Go ahead, please.
I see Counselor Oort's concerns. I also want to make sure that we are respecting the fact that this has been going on for a really long time. Dan, do you think that it is feasible for you to have enough bandwidth to reach out and talk to some of these cities that have this currently? See if there's any feedback that they have? And create an ordinance by the October 7 meeting and taking into consideration the other things that we've discussed? Do you have the ability and bandwidth to do that?
Yes.
Cool. Yeah, I think that we can also do a second consideration if there are a bunch of issues that we could then extend it out just like one more meeting? Is that something that we could also do?
Sure. And if there are issues, you don't need to even have the first consideration following the public hearing.
Okay. So we could just bring it back?
You just ask staff to make changes before you vote on it.
Perfect.
Okay. Want to try a motion again tonight or?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
I move to still have option one, where we direct staff to proceed with preparation of an ordinance and schedule a public hearing... Sorry. For the presentation to city council reflecting the discussion this evening and schedule a public hearing for October 7.
Okay. All right.
I'll second.
And a second. I've got a motion and a second to go with option one on the decision process. Direct staff to proceed with preparation of an ordinance and scheduling a public hearing reflecting the discussion this evening for October 7. Is there any other discussion? Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Counselor Oort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Mullin?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay. So we'll get this one going. All right. That's that one for tonight. Communication from mayor and counselors. I'm going to hope to have a candidate for this vacant council seat for your consideration on the 7th. Also, Thursday evening, is it from 6 to 7?
Yeah, Thursday evening.
An appreciation for Brian Quigley, a counselor that resigned here a month or so ago.
Yeah, it's on my agenda, so I'll go ahead and mention it now, Mr. Mayor. The recognition event for former City Councilman Brian Quigley. It's this Thursday, September 19th, from 6 to 7, and the Signman Meeting Room is a state public library, so we invite everybody in the public to come.
Yeah. Certainly... Yeah. Yeah, I want to get to that. Other thoughts? Counselors?
Mr. Mayor? I just wanted to say, prior to our decision on who will be fulfilling the rest of Councilman Quigley's term, I was hoping that you would have the candidate present for us to ask them a couple of questions before the people who are in attendance. And that way we can make a really thorough decision based on who the person is and, you know, what they are bringing to the table as far as what they can do and good governance and matters like that. But so prior to my vote, I would prefer that. Mr. Mayor?
I took it a further step. I thought of inviting the whole bunch that applied to a meeting, probably the next one, and let them see us with all our warts and wrinkles and us see them. And then make a decision. So I don't know which way to try. I just... The more I think about it, the more I like that because there are a half a dozen really well-qualified people.
Excellent.
I think well-qualified. I told one of them that if I had a job for a economic development coordinator, I would give it to her right there, over the phone. And she couldn't quite do that, but I mean, I was enthusiastic about that. Anything else from any of you on just thoughts? Yes?
I have a couple things. I... Dan, I forgot to mention this earlier, but I'd love to see what the community grants to have people come back and do, even just like a three-minute presentation on what they did for their project. It'd be really great to see that, even from the last year's recipients, just to kind of a before-and-after type of thing. I don't know if we can put that into the draft, but I'd really like to see that. And then there were a couple meetings and comments of concerns regarding the dog park and how the money was used. And I just wanted to thank our city manager and our public works director for taking the time out of their schedules when they could have been doing other things to put together this dog park cost breakdown. I do have two copies if anyone's interested in seeing them. And then we also have it up on our website, so if anyone has any questions and concerns. And just to let you know, if you ever have any questions, you can always go down to the public works. And I know Dan and Lance would love to just chat about the projects we've done with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
You can go ahead.
General?
I just wanted to throw out a final note. I don't know if Counselor Oort forgot or not, but I believe there's Coffee with the Counselor on October 5 that she had organized.
Yes. Thank you. Coffee with the counselor at Moxie Berry from 9:30 to 11:30. No, excuse me, 9:30 to 11:30. There will be coffee available and you can come down and several of the counselors will be there. You can just chat. It's informal, just to get to know us and, yeah, have some coffee.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And that's the... When is that?
The 5th.
5th of October.
October 5th.
Okay. Good. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I also wanted to let the community know that I'm going to be reaching out to a nonprofit to see if they can help us. to see if they can help us get free childcare for our city council meetings, so that people can bring their kids and still be civically engaged. So, it's a company called Politicet, and again, they're a nonprofit. And Hillsborough, I think right now, is already doing free childcare at their city council meetings. So, just wanted to let you guys know that that is in the works, so that more people can be involved, because I think that great things happen when we have this many people in the room, and I am loving seeing you guys all here. It's amazing.
Okay, super. All right, anything else? Hmm, communication from cities to city staff. You want to do that, Keith?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, on Wednesday, September 25th, at 6:00 PM, the Marion County Commissioners will be holding a board session and town hall meeting at the State Public Library at the Sigmund Meeting Room. The agenda for the evening will be at 6:00 PM. They'll have a board session. At 7:00 PM, they'll have a town hall, and everyone is welcome to attend either one or both sessions. So, just wanted to make everyone aware, September 25th, at 6:00 PM, Marion County Commissioners will be holding a meeting at the library.
Thank you, Keith. Anything else from that side of the table? Okay. Future agenda items are a public hearing on code amendments, city properties, a master sewer plan, award of bid. Ooh, we're going to spend some money. And if that's it, it's 8:30, let's go home. Thank you.